Good evening, everybody. This is the advertised time and place for the Thursday, July 3, 2025 Planning Board Meeting. Please join us in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Constitution of this country, on the basis that it is indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we start, on behalf of the planning staff and the planning board, we wish you all a safe and happy 4th of July. That being said, we have a full agenda tonight, so we're going to get right into discussion items. We have no public hearings tonight. So if we get Heather up here to tell us about item number one, Home Depot Outdoor Storage and Site Improvements, please.
Okay. Just want to see, is there a representative for the application? No. Okay. So with the exception of Member Baer, everyone on the board probably recalls last June, I think it was the June 6, 2024 Planning Board meeting, Home Depot came in with an application looking to legalize and formalize outdoor storage areas. And at that time, there were several issues that were discussed, including the lighting in the Home Depot parking lot, some landscaping deficiencies, as well as fire marshal issues. So I referred this to the fire marshals, and they were requiring that sprinkler or fire suppression be installed in the outdoor storage areas up against the building, and they didn't want the pallet storage up against the building. So unfortunately, it's taken over a year, but we finally have revised plans that the fire marshals are good with. They will need the appropriate fire marshal permits, fire sprinkler permits, and building permits to move forward. But at this time, the plans that you have that were revised pretty much cover all of the issues that we went over. The Home Depot parking lot lighting, they're not going to ZBA to try and maintain noncompliant lighting. That was, I think, a big item that was discussed that the planning board was not.
So the entire site will become compliant?
The Home Depot lease area, I discussed with Council Eric specifically. Home Depot is going to be taking care of their entire lease area, so that's the whole parking lot that they have. That lighting plan is included in the plans that you received. And obviously, the property owner understands that they need to update the remainder of the site lighting. I mean, the details.
Will they also extend into the ShopRite area?
The ShopRite's a separate tenant, so between the landlord and the tenant, they're going to have to work out who's paying for it, but they'll have to, I mean, presumably, they would just need electrical permits if they're putting in new fixtures. I don't even know if they would necessarily have to come back to the planning board. You know, we want to see the site lighting upgraded and in compliance with the Dark Skies Code.
Yeah. I'm sure Home Depot's got a good deal on lighting.
Yeah. I was going to say. On top of that, they are going to finally file the reciprocal cross-access. Greg did a lot of digging, and we found the original Hobby Lobby future cross-access. It had some very specific language in there about the adjacent property owner, which is the Riverhead Center property, having to pay and install all the improvements to punch through where that access is, but that's going to happen as part of this application. The property owner is working on it, but they need a resolution number to refer to. So I have a finding in the resolution before you tonight, just sort of reiterating the importance of cross-access between the two sites and why it's being required at this time.
I went there today, the Hobby Lobby is already done.
Yeah, it's already set up.
It's a very small job.
So it's just the other side that needs to be completed, and that'll really help facilitate, you know, traffic circulation between the two sites, and it'll prevent people from making redundant turns onto 58.
Yeah.
So if you wanted to get out to Osborne, you could easily, you know, cross between the two properties. So I, you know, it's taken us a long time to get here, and I want to see the site into compliance. I want to get them to the fire marshals for their proper permits, you know, so if the board has any questions at this point.
Will they need ZBA?
No, nope. They, we sort of, not that we forced their hand, but we said the ZBA is not going to be in a position to grant something that should have been in compliance years ago. So they're going to be lowering all the lighting fixtures and making them, you know, 3,000-degree Kelvin, full cutoff, compliant with Dark Skies Code.
And Heather, like we discussed in your office, the back area, which is a lot of fire zone, and on the east side, on the west side, all the curb, the walking curb has material on it, and the, that can all be cleaned up or organized?
Yeah, so.
And I think you said there are four areas in the back of the building?
Yeah, there are four specific areas that were approved by the Office of the Fire Marshal in the rear of the building. Those will be, have the infrared monitoring and the fire sprinklers, but the striping, that's along the rear of the property, there shouldn't be anything there. And the fire marshals do go for an annual inspection every year, so I fully trust that they'll be making note of any deficiencies or anything where that would impede fire access. So I mean, they'll be following up with them because they have to get the applicable permits through the Fire Marshal's Office.
And one other thing, where they sell the flowers in the springtime?
Yep.
They actually fence it in, but the fence is still up and doesn't look, are you allowing them to keep that all year round?
So that's going to be part of this. They're actually removing the parking stools there, and it's going to be a formalized plant storage area.
Oh, okay.
And, you know, back last June, we went through, they have more than enough parking on-site to facilitate the formalization of these storage areas, and I think it'll just clean up the site. And then in the future, if there's ever a question if they've gone over what they're allowed to do, we can easily look back at the site plan and say, no, you're only supposed to be in this specific square footage. And that'll allow, you know, code enforcement or whoever the official is to give them a violation so that they adhere to the site plan.
Good job.
Yep.
Taken care of.
Thank you, Heather. All right, let's keep moving on. Number two, 305 West Main Street Site Plan with Heather again.
Okay. And with Marty here? Yes. Good.
Just give your name and address, Marty. Just give your name so we know.
Oh, yeah. Martin Semelski, 215 Roanoke Avenue, Riverhead. Thank you.
Okay. So this is a site plan application proposing to construct a new 3,000-square-foot commercial building along with associated site improvements on a 19,780-square-foot parcel located at 305 West Main Street. It's within the Pecanix River Community Zoning Use District. They are proposing retail, that's what the site is parked at, and retail is a permitted use within that zoning use district. I'll note that, you know, the existing buildings that were there, I don't know if anyone was on the board, there was a prior site plan that approved the simple table that was going to reuse that front building, which was previously a tire shop. That unfortunately didn't move forward, and the buildings just continued to deteriorate. There were a lot of issues with squatters, people setting fires, so code enforcement actually had to do a lighted property. You know, they had to write them for that, and they came up with a restoration agreement in conjunction, you know, with the planning department. We allowed them to take the buildings down, provided that they did not disturb the ground or remove any of the foundations. So unfortunately, the site's really just broken up asphalt and concrete at this point, but in order to remove any of that and do site work, they need, on top of planning board approval, they need New York State DEC approval and Town Riverhead Conservation Advisory Council approval because they are within wetlands jurisdiction.
I recall they did have a DEC permit for the other site plan.
Yeah, I mean, that's long since expired.
So they'll need a new one.
Yeah, this, it's WSRR and I think freshwater wetlands, if I remember correctly. And I believe that they're already working through that process with the DEC. We actually just received revised plans last week that show the DEC planting schedule, so the entire gray area in the back of the property that fronts on the Pecanix River will be, you know, restored, allowed to revegetate, which is what the DEC is looking for.
Are they in the sewer district there?
So they are within the sewer district, but I think the site was served by an existing, probably old outdated sanitary system. I did refer it to the Health Department as well as the sewer district. They'll probably have to abandon the existing sanitary system and then make a connection to the sewer district. I referred it to the Water District as well. Their comments are incorporated into my staff report. You know, they'll have to make a formal application there, and depending on the, you know, the water demands for the building, I don't know if they'll be able to use the existing line or not. I think Robin sent in an email to us. It was, I think, a one-inch line that exists?
I think it's a smaller one.
Oh, no, it's a 5A, it's a 5A's water service, so it might have to be upgraded, obviously. They would go through the approval process with the Water District. I did refer it to the Fire Marshal's Office, and, you know, they really didn't have any comments aside from recommending that rear exits be put on each of the suites of the building, which I think would be easily feasible, and it wouldn't affect the footprint of the building. So they do need relief from the Zoning Board of Appeals, you know, PRC, the dimensional regulations, impervious surface coverage, the maximum allowed is 40%, and they are in excess of that. I will note that they're meeting the minimum landscaping requirement. They're over the 50% that's required in the PRC zoning use district, and the New York State DEC requires 30%, which they're well in excess of. And then the other section of code that they need relief for is 301236A1, where a landscape buffer of 25 feet is required because there's the Suffolk County parkland directly to the east of this parcel. And I believe the 711, that's the next parcel down, needed the same relief. You know, this is a fairly narrow parcel, so it's understandable that, you know, they might need relief for that concerning where the new building is situated on the property. So I wanted to bring it to the board just to, you know, introduce it to you and to get your comments prior to them proceeding to the zoning board. And if they're successful, we'll bring them back for a public hearing, so.
Yeah, I would support it. It was an abandoned building with a lot of bad things happening, definitely support it.
Marty, did you need another curb cut, or are you going to use that one?
No, we're going to use that. That's actually an existing 30-foot curb cut that the DOT put in, so luckily we don't have to touch that at all.
Okay.
I thought it, you were, I thought it was getting wider.
No, it's actually, it is 30. It's an existing DOT curb cut that they put in for the previous owner.
Now, because I drove there, I mean, you might have to cut down some of the branches that are.
Yeah, exactly. The town park isn't, I mean, the county park isn't very well maintained.
Yeah.
I did refer it to DOT for, you know, their comments because they will need to review it since it's on a state road. It's a little bit of a tricky intersection. You know, this is just observations from driving through here all the time, from being familiar with the area. You know, the light has been there for a long time, and they, they cleaned it up when they put the lights on the pole rather than having them strum across the street. I just don't know, like, it's directly across from where Osborne Avenue is, so I don't know, like, if someone's looking to get in here from Osborne Avenue, I'm assuming they would have to wait for the light to change, but if they're looking to exit the site and go north on Osborne, I don't know if DOT is going to want to see it incorporated into the signalized intersection or not. I'm not really sure how that would work, but I'm not a traffic engineer, so.
DOT will figure it out.
Yeah. You know, other than that, all of the, you know, applicable referrals were made. The Planning Commission came back with quite a few comments, which are consistent with my staff report, and again, they need to go through the zoning board process. So until that happens, you know, I just wanted to.
Yeah, I think our goal is to just make sure there's nothing glaring that you see so that we can get the referral to zoning, and we still got that hurdle, and then we'll be back.
Okay. Go forward to it.
I guess I had a very difficult time reading this plan. I really did. I'm not even sure, are you going to tear down the existing building?
Yeah, they're gone.
Yeah, they're gone. Yeah, we got the violation, and that actually allowed us a denied review, and redo his feed, knock him down, so. And the owner wanted.
Haven't been by there lately.
He was getting callbacks, there were vagrants kept breaking in and moving in.
Yeah. What was it, page, I think?
Probably a couple of reclaims, too.
Page four of my staff report, figure four, that was that little bungalow in the back, and I mean, there was garbage everywhere, and PD was called out, code enforcement was called out several times to the site.
Yeah, you could see that.
So we cleaned it up already, we just want to keep going.
Yeah, good. Anything else, guys?
Thank you.
Good. Thank you. Good luck. Okay, Matt, come on up. Tell us all about Benicia Square, please.
Do we have to, are they going to do a referral to the ZBA? Do we have to reject? Heather, Heather, just, I'm sorry. Do we have to write, is there going to be a letter that we have to write to ZBA?
No, I'll forward them to my staff report. I mean, if you have any additional comments, but Greg will sign the denial letter.
Yeah. Justin, if we can use the eye in the sky, please. It's amazing. Inside, it's very helpful.
Just to bring everybody up to speed on Benicia Square, if everyone's not familiar, I don't know how you could believe, we've been reviewing this for a little bit of time. It's a site plan application to construct a commercial center. It's 27,000 square feet of retail within a, with two 10,000-square-foot buildings, one 7,000-square-foot building, one 4,000-square-foot bank with drive-thru, one 6,000-square-foot building, which includes a 76-seat restaurant and two takeout restaurants. It's a 6.342 acre parcel, so Route 25A and Wading River on the south side, approximately 789.6 feet west of the New York 25A-Wading River Manor Road intersection in the Business CR zoning use district, and it is multiple tax parcels. I have been reviewing this application since about the fall of 2022, not long after I started with the Town Riverhead. We did commence SECR coordination on this, I believe, in August of 2023, coordinated with the involved agencies. That's a type-one action because it involves more than 50 parking places. At the same time, we did retain LKMA as traffic consultant to review the expanded environmental assessment form prepared by the applicant. So it's been a lengthy review process. This is also within the Pine Barrens compatible growth area. It was considered a development of regional significance when it came in. Those standards have changed, but based on the submission, they still have to go through that process, as far as I understand, but they do comply to all Pine Barrens standards. So in your packet today, sorry, adding to this, they do propose a traffic light at the intersection of Route 25A and Dogwood Drive. DOT has reviewed this. They conceptually agreed with the placement of the traffic light in December of 2025. We've gone through some revisions to make sure all the improvements necessary for DOT can fit into the existing right-of-way. Those do fit, so we have gone through a little bit of tweaking to make sure the lanes are correct size, but generally DOT is happy. So I think at this point in time, we're in a very good place to move forward with the application. I have a resolution on today for a negative declaration pursuant to SECR. It's a little bit different because I added a narrative to the Part 3 AF, just related to the size and scope of the application to make sure, you know, no stone was left unturned, which I think is the case here, and then to schedule a public hearing also.
Has, has the project been the same since its inception, or has it made changes?
So I, I believe its original inception was in, like, 2007?
Yes.
That predates the zone, which I think it's probably, well, the zone existed, but they, the standards changed during that process, but throughout, I believe it has always complied with the dimensional requirements of the zoning use district and the design. As you know, in Business CR, there's a very specific design for a commercial center. You know, you're supposed to, you know, everyone's supposed to surround a, all buildings are supposed to surround a central square feature.
Campus style.
Which this does, like a campus. So this is kind of what we were looking for in this area. I understand traffic is a concern on this road, but based on the timing changes to the existing light, the installation of the new light, it'll actually improve traffic.
They're not going to get into that street again, correct?
No, we, the town abandoned the plan for the.
Good.
The service road, I guess you'd say, in favor of, in favor of cross-access between parcels.
That was a big stumbling block.
Yeah, yeah. So that's been gone, I think, since, like, 2015, but in favor of cross-access, which this parcel indicates to the Rockwell Funeral Home to the west, and then there's a vacant parcel to the east. But it's come a long way.
Okay.
We're doing two actions to consider tonight. Do you have any questions on the narrative, or what's included, or where we're at?
I don't. I think we're good.
Yeah.
Good luck, Chuck.
Thank you very much.
We'll see you at the public hearing.
Okay. I'll be sure.
All right, number four, Bargain Molding Site Plan Amendment with Greg Bergman. Enlighten us, Greg.
Good evening.
Take care, Chuck.
Thank you. So this is a quick update. We have an amendment application to the Bargain Molding Site Amendment. That was an application that was approved by the board back on March 6 of 2025. That approved a site plan to reuse the existing vacant building on 58. At that time, so this, the site is approved with the existing, I think it's about a 9,000-square-foot building. The site plan that the planning board had originally approved proposed one-way traffic circulation through the site. Traffic would enter on the east side of the building, circle around behind the building, and then exit through a new curb cut on the west side of the building. This site is actually two separate parcels, which are owned by different entities. The applicant, Bargain Molding, as a result of the proposed site plan application, the property owner would not allow them to use the portion of that western property for the paving and drainage improvements. So Bargain Molding's hands are sort of tied, they're just looking to get into the space and get it occupied. So what they did is they proposed, revised the plans to just have the existing curb cut on the east side of the building will be two-way traffic. The parking stalls will be reconfigured, there will be nine parking stalls located on the east side of that driveway. Again, it provides the required 24-foot-wide drive aisle, and there will be five parking stalls on the building. They're going to resurface the area, so that's really the main change that's before us. I did send the revised plans to, with, along with a updated 239F form to Suffolk County DPW for their review and comments. The plans do show the 24-foot-wide future cross-access on the east side that we did require as part of that prior site plan. However, it doesn't really line up with that existing east-to-west driveway on the neighboring property, so that's just got to get moved. The plans have been updated, they did provide a lighting plan, which shows all dark-sky-compliant fixtures, building-mounted lighting on the, on the building. Beyond that, I have an approval resolution after administrative, all the other conditions, they still need to get Health Department approval, sewer approval, file the cross-access, and they will need a permit from the Suffolk County.
Yeah. Is anybody here from the applicant?
Yeah.
You can, you can sit. I just, I just want to, you know, I know you're in a hurry to get going, and we've tried to really help you out. I drove by the site, it's a mess.
You're, you're, I'm sorry, I'm Greg.
Okay, good. Mow the lawn, trim the bushes, the grass is.
You're 100%. I went there on my way here today, and I was like, oh my God, we haven't mowed it. My apologies.
Yeah, no, it's, I know you're busy, you know, you want to get in, but in the same token.
You're right.
You want it to look a little better.
Absolutely, 100%. So I'll get that to you first thing for you guys.
Are you using the building?
No. No, we can't use it.
Okay.
I would love to, but unfortunately, right now, we're not. But I apologize, guys, I'll take care of that right away.
Thank you, appreciate it.
I'll pay us for forgiveness.
Greg, the only question I have is, is on the plans, is chain-link fence between, you know, the properties and the property on the east, is anyway, because it's so nice and clean, just to do a small, you know, some type of plantings instead of a chain-link fence? Because the chain-link fence is what they took down.
So the, yeah, the chain-link fence is down, so there's not really much room between, you know, I mean, there could maybe be something agreed to with the neighboring property owner, put a base, put a landscape buffer in, but, you know, they're sort of dealing with the existing site conditions, those parking stalls, or, you know. We don't have a requirement to buffer or screen commercial from commercial, but again, you know, with this site coming in for redevelopment to the east, I think we had a recently approved site plan there, I think they could probably come up with some kind of small landscape buffer, just put some landscaping between those two.
Plus the tenants and not the owner of the property.
Correct.
Anyway.
Are they still going to be, have to tie into the sewer?
Yes, so I, I know, I believe Young &amp; Young's working on, or, sorry, Young Engineering, I believe they're working on that. I haven't heard the status update from them, but I know they are working on that through the Health Department and the sewer district.
As far as material going in and out of the building, is there a designated area? Is it going to just go out the front door, or is there like a bay where people are picking up material that they can?
Yeah, so everything would come out on the back of the building, nothing would come out on the front.
Nothing's coming out the front at all?
No, there's a, there's two garage doors around the back that we could utilize for that. That's what we're planning on doing.
Okay. And with the parking the way it is, that'll allow for that?
Sure. Yep.
Good. All right, thanks, Greg.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Just one thing, sir, if you could just state your last name for the record?
Klatchka.
Thank you.
All right, number five, 940 through 946 West Main Street Redevelopment with Greg.
All right, so this is an update on the redevelopment plan for the 940 to 946 West Main Street site. As the board recalls, we had a site plan application proposing to construct two new buildings. That plan and its previous iteration required several variances from the Zoning Board of Appeals. The ZBA denied those variances, so the applicant went back to the drawing board, shrunk the size and scope of the project. They eliminated the basement for the self-storage building, and they reduced the size of the wholesale business building. So now the site and the project fully complies with the dimensional regulations of the zoning district, so it does not require any variances. We already did SECR on a more intense version of the project, so the SECR analysis that was done would be consistent, you know, this is a arguably much less intense development, so the SECR analysis would be consistent. The revised plans went to the ARB, and they were approved, they're under review. The ARB looked at them back on June 25. We did have comments, you know, referred it to the Fire Marshal, Water District, they're proposing to expand the sewer district, they've already submitted a petition to do so. There were, was a letter from the DEC, they've got to work out some issues with the DEC relating to the Wild Scenic Recreational Rivers area. So at this point, based on the fact that the plans fully comply with the zoning and dimensional regulations, I have a resolution to schedule it for a public hearing and move it forward.
I like the new facade a lot, a lot better than the last one. I don't have any other issues. We've been kind of beating this thing to death, gentlemen, anything?
Yeah, I do. First thing is, on this retaining wall that you've designed, where is that going to be?
We have a small retaining wall, this, we have a bigger copy, this is pretty small, actually, same size.
Justin, can you zoom in, please?
Actually, the, there's a small retaining wall in the front here, along the western frontage of the property. This corner of the property is being built up a little bit. So from, from West Main Street here up to the property line, we go from an elevation at Main Street, we have an elevation of 14, and our parking lot up there, we go to the grading plant, will be, the invert of the drain is 1625, so we got about a two-foot, you know, raise in the, in the grade, so then the parking's higher, so we have, it's a low retaining wall, like one of those low-block retaining walls.
Okay. I don't know if. Are you aware that there's, uh, going to be some exporting of fill?
Yes. Yeah, this is a cut fill.
4,000?
This is a cut fill, uh, project altogether, and the total cut is 7,238 yards.
Okay. Let's see.
We're going to cut a little bit into the east side because the property goes up. Matter of fact, from the previous, uh, site, the Blackman property, when they had it, they had already in the northeast corner, they went in toward the railroad, and they gouged out a big area. They pulled it out, and you could see there's a big slope by the railroad. So we're holding that grade there, and then we're pushing dirt, uh, southwestward to the other corner to create the level plateau for the buildings.
Okay, uh, in front, on Main Street, you've got water valves, a whole bunch of them. What are they all for?
We have one, I'm sorry.
Water valves. Right in the front.
Oh, those are, those are exist, that's just from the survey, those are existing valves.
Right.
There are existing buildings on the site now. Uh, my guess is that they're right where the existing buildings are. Those are probably valves for the existing buildings.
Okay.
They're in the street. There, I imagine they're valves. We copied in from the surveyor, so those will probably go away. Um, we are going to have new gas, uh, we want to have gas, gas service. We will have, uh, electric and water.
Okay. The screened areas, what exactly is going to go in there?
Uh, that is a gravel area for outdoors, screened outdoor storage. So anybody that has the building, uh, you, you know, a tenant, if they, you needed additional storage, uh, for their materials associated with their business, this, uh, this is a general warehousing use. They can have that storage in the back area. It's got to be suitably screened, which it is, and it's just a gravel, uh, screened storage area, outdoor storage yard.
Okay. I wasn't sure that we weren't going to see compost or anything, we had that going on.
Yeah. No.
Marty, what kind of screen, uh, is six-foot, um, fencing?
Yeah, we, we did a chain link fence with a slat in it.
With slats in it.
Okay, just, could you review the water system? Because it, it, it runs in a lot of different directions.
Yeah, we have, well, we have a new water service on the, right here on the, um, the east building. This is a new water service, and if you look at the plan, it goes right into the, the water service room on the side of the building. And we have a water service on the west side of this building that goes into an RPZ room here. That, that's the only two water services. Both buildings will have sprinkler and domestic service.
And that, that will then service both buildings?
Yeah, there's one ser, one water service for each building, correct?
For each?
And we have one electric service for each building.
Okay, so you're tapping off the main, the main?
Correct, that is correct.
Two places.
There are some existing water services there that we really can't use because we're doing sprinkler. So those would be retired, and we would replace that with two new water taps, one for each building for domestic as well as fire protection.
And, okay, now the sewer. Um, you, I see the sewer going, uh, onto the first building. What about the second building?
Yeah, it, actually, what happens is we brought the sewer line on to the site, to the first building, where we have a manhole, and we extend it to building two, and then go into building two.
You're going to have a force main, or is it going to be gravity?
Uh, that will all be reviewed. Currently, what's happening right now is, uh, the town's consulting firm, H2M, I believe that they're preparing a map and plan for that.
They have provided.
Yeah.
They have the map and plan.
They have the map and plan, yeah. So that, that's done by the town's consulting engineer for the sewer district. So they're doing the engineering for all that right now. So this may change as far as the sewer. I'm not sure. We just showed, you know, initially a sewer that, you know, we felt was appropriate to tie in both buildings, but that will also be subject to a review.
That could require pumping of?
It mentions a pump.
Oh, yeah? Does, okay.
Yeah, the sewer ends, the sewer ends there at, uh, across the street at the, uh...
By Maple, by Maple Deli there.
Yeah, yep.
So, yeah, they, the map and plan shows a pump pumping it up to that location.
Yeah, actually, it's a little bit, it's on the old Cottage Lane, so you got Rayner.
Yeah.
And Cottage Lane, which is next to the barbecue place, I think.
Well, I think, I think, I think it actually, uh, years ago, I remember looking at it. It was, uh, where they, where they make the statue, where they have the statues, the artists have the statues, that's where it ends. I believe on Main.
Oh, it comes down, all the way down to, uh, across from Maple.
Is it a crawl all the way across from Maple?
Across, right in the top of the line, you'll see a six-foot chain link fence, and there's a box in there, that's the sewer pump in there.
Okay, okay.
Marty, the 7,000, uh, yards of fill that you're going to take out, uh, what's your intentions on doing? What goes with that? The excavator takes care of that, or the?
Yes.
Or the property owner?
The excavator takes it.
The excavator takes it, okay.
And they did have an environmental done, by the way, and everything is clean.
Okay, all right, all right.
Just give me your names for the record, please.
Ray Dickoff, I represent the applicant, the owner, and I'm from Aklebar.
Martin Sanloski, I'm the design professional for the applicant.
Thank you very much. Anything else, gentlemen?
Nope.
Thank you. Good luck. Okay.
Thank you.
Oh, you're quite welcome.
We're independent, so.
Yes, you too. Don't blow any fingers off.
No.
Okay, number six, Tanger Allen Mall, 1700 Building, Shake Shack Conversion with Greg.
Good evening, how are you?
Can we get your name, please?
Sure, Gino Tedesco, R&amp;M engineer, engineer for the applicant, at Elm Street, Arlington, New York.
Thank you. So we have before us a site plan application seeking to perform minor upgrades to what's known as the 1700 building at Tanger, which is located proximate to Old Country Road. Uh, this used to be the Banana Republic Building. I think there's a children's toy store in there now as well. Uh, the site plan application proposes facade improvements, um, site upgrades including access, parking upgrades. Uh, approximately 31, 3200 square feet of that building will be converted to a Shake Shack restaurant. Uh, the remainder will remain as retail uses.
Is there any other uses, uh, besides the, the share of this application? Is there any other uses in that building?
So there is a children's toy store, I believe, which is in the 1928 square foot portion of the building.
Okay.
The remainder of the building, I think it's about 12,000 square feet, right now it's vacant. Um, the only reason the, the application is not before the planning board for the use, uh, the only reason this is in before the planning board is because of the site and access improvements and changes to the parking. Uh, so really, very limited scope in terms of nature of what they're doing. Uh, there are no new curb cuts proposed on County Route 58, uh, in order to create easier access to the Shake Shack location. Uh, the application proposes to remove some of the existing curbing on the north side of the internal Tanger driveway, uh, so there will be a right-in, so you can come off of 58 from either direction, make a right into the parking lot, park there, get to the Shake Shack. Uh, they're redoing some ramps and curbing throughout the vicinity of the site. Uh, they're going to update some landscaping throughout the site, and the facade of the building will be completely redone. Uh, the facade was reviewed by the ARB at last month's meeting, and it was approved. The restaurant use is permitted. Uh, the town board recently updated the business F zoning code, so it allows one quote "food court" per campus, or that food court can be substituted for a restaurant use. So that's what Tanger is opting for, for this location, um, considering the different Tanger, considering this a separate Tanger campus, um, so they don't have to lose the food court in the main, you know, at the back of the horseshoe there on Avenue 2. Uh, the proposed action is a type 2 action under SECRE, as it involves reuse of an existing commercial structure. Um, just one minor, I did note the business F zoning code has a certain number, I believe it's 20% of the total seating of the restaurant can be outdoor. Um, they just need to tweak the seating calculations in order to comply with the regulations of the business F zoning district.
Is this a franchise or single?
Oh, no, Shake Shack's all over the place.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I was just wondering, they usually, they usually don't have them as restaurants. They're usually takeout.
No, I mean, they have, they, I mean, their, their, their business model, they have a sit-down restaurant. There's no, I, I've never seen a drive-through at a Shake Shack, but there is no drive-throughs. I mean, it's a traditional sit-down restaurant. Um, I mean, you can get takeout, and they do DoorDash, all that sort of stuff, so you can go in and go.
I'm just familiar with several of them in Manhattan and there.
Yeah, no, I mean, definitely, you're going to have to...
Wait in line.
You're going to have to beat me away with a stick when this opens. Very, very much looking forward to it. But yeah, traditional sit-down restaurant, I believe the number of seats proposed is, uh, 68 total seats, uh, so there will be some outdoor, some indoor seats.
Excuse me, Greg, on, on, as far as the seating goes, where's the outdoor seating going to be on the drawing? You have...
Um, it's right, it's right outside the back door, so there'll be just that little patio area right in here.
So that'll be facing Old Country Road?
Yeah, I think. No, it'll be, it'll be facing the internal Tanger driveway. I mean, you're, you're probably talking a couple of picnic takeout.
On the east side of it, or the south?
No, it'll be on the south side, so here's...
It's going to be somewhere here.
Over here?
Yeah, Old Country Road is at the top of the page.
Right, yep.
So right in this area, yeah, probably.
It'll be facing the internal road.
Correct.
Got you. Okay, thank you. But I think the entrance, the entrance is facing Old Country Road to get, to walk in, right?
The entrance to the, the restaurant will be on, oh, facing Old Country Road.
Facing, right, right. Yeah. Yes, the main door, the main door is in the corner of the building, right here, facing Old Country Road.
Um, so the applicant did prepare a traffic study, even though this is just a reuse of a commercial building, I've known, I've seen Shake Shack get pretty busy. Uh, so they prepared a traffic study, and they went and took traffic counts at a Shake Shack location in Melville. Uh, they took counts on a Friday and a Saturday for a different range of times. Uh, the traffic study looked at several different intersections throughout the site, including the, uh, driveway on 58, the internal driveways as well. Um, they found no significant impacts as a result of the change in use. They did note, and I provided the traffic impact study to the Suffolk County DPW. I guess the DPW provided some traffic timing data with the, the signal on 58 that didn't actually match what was in the field. This is really less of an issue with a change of tenant or a change of use, and more just with the overall signal timing along 58, which, you know, we were having a discussion earlier. I've, I've heard for several years now that they're going to be working on that signal timing, so, um, I did send this to the DPW for their review and comment because it is on 58. You know, whatever they choose to do with that signal timing, if they're going to update it, that's really in Suffolk County DPW's purview. Uh, the last bit on this is site lighting, so I did go through the site. I noticed, I mean, it was tough to estimate, but I would estimate that the poles are probably close, close to 30 feet high. Um, I did speak to Brett Brophy, who is the representative from Tanger who I'm dealing with. I let him know that we're going to need to bring the 17, you know, the lighting in this vicinity up to compliance with town code. Again, understanding that the remainder of the parking lot is going to be a huge, huge lift. Um, you know, again, we've been treating these things coming in to bring it to compliance.
Yeah, but they have to start.
Yeah, exactly. And, you know, to just come and say, you know, you got to replace lighting on an entire 42-acre site is a major undertaking in and of itself. Uh, so the applicant agreed, and they'd come in with a lighting plan to update the lighting for the vicinity of the 1700 building, uh, which I've included as a condition of approval in the resolution. Beyond that, straight, pretty straightforward.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Nope.
No, good.
Okay, good luck.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you. All right, don't go anywhere, Greg. Number seven, Eastern Commons BJ's Fueling Station and Expansion.
Good afternoon. My name is Hansley Mahan, Farrell Fritz, 100 Motor Parkway, Suite 300, Alphaz, New York, 11788.
You, sir?
Chris Bzogno, R&amp;M Engineering, 50 Elm Street, Arlington, New York, 11743.
So we've got a site plan application which is seeking to construct an approximately 10,500 square foot expansion to the existing BJ's Wholesale Club on the north end of the building, as well as an eat-pump 16-location accessory fueling station, as well as 165 square foot fueling attendant station kiosk. Site plan proposes to reconfigure the existing parking lot on the north side of the property and perform landscaping improvements. Uh, the site's located, the address is 565 to 605 Old Country Road. It's got frontage on both Old Country Road and Northville Turnpike, which are both county roads. Uh, the property is currently approved with a 93,000 square foot BJ's Wholesale Club and approximately 110,000 square foot building, housing a number of uses, including Suffolk County Department of Social Services, Box Pickleball, and some other vacant spaces that are unidentified, tenants yet. Uh, property is located within the shopping center zoning use district. So when this application was initially discussed, and I looked at the zoning, uh, the shopping center zoning is a pretty vague description of what's permitted. Uh, I did note that I looked at the underlying CO for the BJ Wholesale Club, which received a CO for a wholesale club back in the summer of 1996. Uh, so I made the interpretation that I consider the fueling station customarily accessory to the wholesale club. Uh, we do have another zoning district on the road, the DRC zoning district, which specifically calls out fueling stations as accessory to wholesale clubs, as the board is aware. The Costco has an accessory fueling station, um, so I'm considering it customarily accessory to that use, with the condition that it remains branded, you know, this cannot be a separate standalone facility operated by another entity, needs to be remain branded a BJ's Gas Station. If the BJ's were to close, obviously, the accessory use would be lost.
Yeah, how far is freshwater from the project?
Freshwater? I mean, the freshwater you've got here, I mean...
Just, just to the east of the parcel, there's...
I mean, there are several, I would say several hundred from the freshwater wetland boundary. I mean, the freshwater wetland boundary is right here.
Yeah.
I mean, it's close to three hundred.
Okay.
Greg, the covenant on the, on the station, should they decide to close the store, does that same covenant exist on the property where they're currently pumping gas?
No, so that was a different, that, while it's a BJ's branded gas station, I believe they actually received a use variance. I don't want to speak too much just because it's been about seven or eight years.
I remember it was sold.
But I believe that was a use variance because I think it was strong oil, and I remember there was a use variance that ran with the land on that.
From, um, water mill?
Yeah, so that one, that, so that, so that, I mean, that's not really in the equation.
Okay, okay.
That can operate, I mean, if BJ's wanted to sell that, that could continue to operate as a fueling station.
So that is not rented, that is owned by the corporation?
Uh, they're leasing.
They lease it, okay.
Yeah.
All the lighting compliant on the site plan?
Yeah, so they've actually updated this site lighting. We've been through a couple of different site plans on this. When DSS came in, when Box Pickleball came in, they've since updated all the site lighting, brought it down, LED compliant heights, three thousand degrees Kelvin, so they're not. The only lighting that they're doing here is some additional wall-mounted lighting, which again complies, and then they have to rearrange the parking lot on the north side, so they will reconfigure some of those existing poles, but they're all compliant.
Okay.
We just approved not too long ago that, that revamping of that area so that we could move the traffic along a lot better there.
On the Ostrander side, yeah, we.
So there was that?
The resolution was tabled, as I, my, to my.
Oh, it was tabled?
Out at that meeting, but I believe the resolution was tabled.
Okay.
An issue with the cross.
I didn't remember that, okay, okay.
So I did, this is an unlisted action pursuit to Secra. We commenced, we commenced a coordinated review. I distributed the coordination materials to all involved agencies. Riverhead Water District, Sewer District, Highway, Fire Marshal, Suffolk County Planning Commission, Suffolk County Department of Health Services, as well as Public Works. I did note that elevations were provided for the fueling canopy and the station, which were approved by the ARB. They did not provide elevations for the ten thousand square foot BJ's expansion, so that'll just need to be submitted if they want to come in and go further, go along further with that. So regarding traffic circulation to the fueling station, vehicles can enter either on the south side of the fueling area or on the north side. Vehicles would come in, be oriented in an east-west direction, fuel up, and then leave through the western side of the fueling station. From there, they could either go back here, out to the light at Old Country Road, or they could travel behind the building to get out to Northville Turnpike.
So that, so that area is a two-way street?
So behind BJ's is a two-way street, yeah, I mean, that's when I, if, you know, if I'm going there to shop on my lunch break, I come up Northville, I come up behind the building, I park here, that's how I get out. I do just make a recommendation. Right now, if you're driving north behind the building, this is sort of a blind corner when you're coming around. There's no stop sign, there's no really any control there, so I just recommend a stop sign, the stop bar be located there just to sort of mitigate any sort of potential conflicts there. Recommend a do not enter sign here, just because right now the traffic is all directed out to the south. So put in a do not, do not enter signage there. The parking lot will be reconfigured, again, the site, based on the total amount of uses and the square footage there, requires nine hundred and thirty-one parking stalls. The site provides a total of eight hundred and sixty-five improved stalls, as well as eighty-eight land bank stalls. So they can provide a total of nine hundred and fifty-three parking stalls, where only nine hundred and thirty are required. Again, I don't think I've ever been to this parking lot when it's been, you know, like, more than seventy-five percent full, so that's not an issue. One minor note is that this bank of parking stalls, which is located approximate to the fueling station, the depth of those stalls is always shown as sixteen point five feet, needs to be twenty feet. There's sixty feet here between the curbing and fueling station, so they can easily pick up three and a half feet. That's not a major.
And eight by ten?
What's that? Yes, ten by ten. Ten foot, yeah, so they will, if they push that back three and a half feet, they'll get all the compliant ten by ten parking stalls. Landscaping will be updated throughout the site. I did note that there is some regrading that's gonna be done in the northwest corner of the site to facilitate the installation of the underground fuel tanks.
You do?
Yeah, let's. Can you zoom in a little bit on this, Justin? Good, thank you. So this site will be regraded, and they show it to be regone with hydroseed. There's a really nice vegetative wooded buffer along there, it's just, I'm not sure how much of that existing buffer would need to be lost. But I do recommend just a little more substantial revegetation plan than just some hydroseed. Right now, there's an existing snow storage equipment removal, you know, their contractor maintains the lots, they keep a couple of trucks there, trailer and their salt and sand. So wherever that's gonna be relocated should just be shown, obviously, it's not a permanent improvement, but they're gonna need to maintain that on-site. As I said, I referred everything to involved agencies. I did get comments back from the Health Department, which I'll forward to the board. Still waiting on DPW, Planning Commission. In terms of Sewer District, they are proposing to connect, there's a bathroom proposed for the fueling station kiosk. They are proposing a force main that would connect to a manhole on Oliver Street.
Where is that, where is that bathroom?
Uh, there's a bathroom within the kiosk. The kiosk is small, it's a hundred and sixty square feet. It's portioned into three sections. There's the.
All right.
IT area with the electric and utilities, then there's the bathroom area here.
Okay.
And then there is the tenant, uh, tenant.
I just didn't know where it was.
Attendant area.
I know it's reference, but where it is.
Yeah, so it's on the, it's on the west side of the kiosk, and the plan is to have a sewer connection, gravity to this landscaped area here, put in E-one pump station, low-pressure force main, pipe, which will tie into the sewer in Oliver Street.
So will there need to be any clearing to facilitate the installation of that main?
Typically, with this, with this force main, it's only one and a half inches, two inches. It's a small pipe, so they can missile it through. So I don't intend to see any clearing, if there is, we'll have to, we'll have to show, we'll show it and we'll revegetate as needed. I've already spoken with Tim Allen a couple of times over at the Sewer District, and he gave us a connection approval. So I can forward that to you as well.
And where are you gonna bring, where are you gonna bring the water in from?
I'm sorry?
Where is the water supply coming in?
So right now, there's a water, there's a hot box in the, in the corner of the, northwest corner of the site up here, and there's a water main that runs down this side. It goes all the way down the back, it ties in up front, and we plan on just.
Just tying in there, okay.
Inside the site.
That is right, okay, thanks.
Beyond that, we got comments from the town engineer, still waiting for Fire Marshal comments. I do recommend, I have a resolution on it, if the board's comfortable, we could schedule a public hearing on it. That'll give time for the secret coordination period to end, hopefully get comments.
Is the station open?
They don't intend to close the opening, but it's gonna take subsequent.
What will the hours of operation be, the same as the store hours, or?
Typically, it's about six to ten, AM to PM.
And attendant will be there at all for the six to ten?
I like the idea of getting traffic off of fifty-eight, which is a lot of complaints on Ostrander. And I actually like the idea of going behind the building because there are actually three means of exits, which is a great idea. And the only thing, like I spoke with Greg, if you can do some tree trimming, a lot of the branches are starting to overhang that exit area.
Sure.
And I'm just, I think it's, yeah, it's great design.
Yeah, I mean, that's just, that's a general comment, I mean, you know, like, some of these landscaped islands, like, when you go to exit the parking lot, if you go to enter that perimeter driveway, some of those shrubs, like, on either side here are sort of high, it's tough to, you almost have to be, like, out in the lane to see what's coming, so. Yeah, if they could just, just generally maintain landscaping.
Yeah, we could, we could add it as a, to clean it up.
Yeah, we reviewed the staff report and where the, the comments with respect to the addition of the do not enter sign, the stop sign, modifying the stall depth to be code compliant, updating the revegetation plan, the relocation of the storage equipment, uh, I'm sorry, the snow removal equipment, we're all gonna incorporate that into the next revision of the plans, which we'll wait until the public hearing in case if there are any public comments or any further comments from the board.
That was good, gentlemen?
Good.
Yep.
Good.
Good, thank you, good luck.
Thank you.
Have a great weekend.
You do the same, happy fourth. Okay, at this time, we have public comments on all resolutions. Anybody like to speak?
Good evening, gentlemen, my name is James Nunnamaker. I reside on Scenic Lake Drive in Riverhead. I wish to speak in opposition to resolution number six. The bottom line is, Riverhead doesn't need another cannabis dispensary. We already have three, there are several adjacent to us, and if you watch Channel twelve, there's at least two who deliver all over Long Island, the existing one on Old Country Road delivers. And since this came to my attention, I've been driving along Old Country Road frequently, and I have yet to see more than eight or nine, nine is the maximum number of cars I've seen in the parking lot at the one adjacent to Walmart or the west end of fifty-eight. It's my understanding that the location at the west end of fifty-eight delivers all over town, and do we really need another dispensary? That's, that's the real question, and so one way to look at this is looking at the neighborhoods. Just, I don't know the dimension, the distance, but I'm guessing it's about seven hundred and fifty feet south of Old Country Road on Ostrander, there's a church, and from the church down to the aquarium, we have a very vibrant neighborhood. You go over to Roanoke, and from Roanoke, from the traffic circle down, we have another vibrant neighborhood. You look along middle, you have John Wesley, then you have the three condo communities, all of which have seen very substantial appreciation in the value, and that could be adversely affected by the dispensary, more traffic in the area. Roanoke, I'm sorry, Ostrander is a narrow two-lane road. There's, we just really don't need it at the site. One of the, thinking about it in another dimension is, you know, do we need a dispensary a thousand feet from the hospital emergency room? Surely, we're having people going to that emergency room with substance abuse problems. Do we need a dispensary a thousand, two thousand feet away? As a lawyer, one of the things that I, that bothers me greatly is, retired lawyer, I should say.
We were just starting to like it until you said that.
Well, I like, I think of myself as a recovering lawyer. There, right now, based on a check I did yesterday, there is no legally approved, legally sanctioned test for cannabis that the police can use in New York State courts to determine whether a person is operating a motor vehicle under the influence of cannabis. There's a one, there are several wonderful tests for alcohol, but a cop really is on very thin ice making a stop for influence of marijuana. There's tests, blood tests that can be done for conventional drugs, not marijuana. Do we need that? We also have, I, I realize the planning board is focusing on that site, I, I do. But not far away, down the hill, down middle, is the Timothy Hill Ranch. We have teenagers who are there, who are at risk. Do we need a cannabis facility within three tenths, four tenths of a mile of adolescents at risk? I think my request would be to deny the change of use for the zoning on that. If they want to keep a car dealership there, that's fine, but not a, not a cannabis dealer. And that's, that's my major points, thank you.
Good points, thank you, sir. Anybody else?
Hi, also, my name's Mary Hyland, I live in Saddle Lakes on Scenic Lake Drive, and I'm very unhappy with the plan to install yet another cannabis dispensary on our corner, two tenths of a mile from our gate. You have four senior citizen communities, and we are a vibrant, spending money type of resident in Riverhead. We use the restaurants, we use the entertainment venues. You have portrayed, well, let me just go back up. Riverhead never had such a great reputation, it was never stellar. Now, you're gonna have us known as the source, and not Fortune Off. It's gonna be the source of cannabis, and the whole East End is gonna be coming here looking for drugs. Is this what we want? The senior citizens are gonna be afraid to go out at night, you know, it, it's just crazy that you want to have yet another one. CNN published recently that cannabis use causes a twenty-nine percent increase in stroke and heart disease, heart attacks. We have the hospital right there, so I guess that's a good thing, but it's a nightmare in traffic. The Ostrander cannot absorb the volume of traffic, it's already a nightmare. I was coming from a funeral this morning, and there was almost an accident right in front of me, that somebody's trying to make a turn, because there is no place to put a turning lane. So it, it's a dangerous, busy intersection, because fifty-eight's a main thoroughfare, and now you want to put a cannabis distribution site on the corner? I think it's a very bad decision. The flavor of the community is gonna be destroyed. We're a very nice community, you are like two tenths of a mile from private residences, from a church. This is just me clocking it as I drive. Then you have the Timothy Hill Ranch, you have the four senior citizen communities, and you have the high, as Jim said, that the entire street of Ostrander is private residences. Why do, why do we have to be destroyed? Because this is gonna destroy our property values, it's gonna make us afraid to go out at night. And I just think, it's too close to Pecanic Hospital, it's too close to private residences, it's too close to the Timothy Hill Ranch. And I think that the variance that is required, because there also had been rules written in twenty-two, November of twenty-two, which required a thousand-foot setback. As I understand it, those rules have been eliminated to accommodate this plan, rather than the plan accommodating the.
That's, that's not true.
So the.
No variance has been required.
So there's no variances, this is a fully compliant site, it complies with all.
Isn't there a variance required to put that building up? They want to add another six thousand square foot building?
There is no, there is no variance required.
Well, so I am just very frustrated with the town. I came here, spoke at your last meeting, I think it was June fifth, and it was, I was told, maybe go to the town board. The town board said, come to you, that this is a matter for the, for the planning. So I feel like I'm being bounced around, and that our concerns as valid citizens, taxpaying citizens, are just being ignored for the purpose of money, revenue. But you're gonna destroy the fabric of the community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other speakers?
Hi, how you doing?
Good, you?
Dawn Collins, I live in Riverhead. And I agree with my friends who just. Right, but I just want to say that there should be no cannabis dispensaries, right? What are you doing? What are you doing? You gonna send your kids in there? Your grandkids in there? Go get pot, are you kidding me? What happened to the war on drugs, just say no, right? You should all be ashamed of yourselves. We shouldn't even be here, standing here.
Why should we be ashamed of ourselves?
Because you should not be putting up cannabis shops.
Okay, listen, we're the planning.
I mean, you're gonna make.
We're the planning board, we do not make policy.
Three percent on a sale for revenue, and where are you gonna put that money? In drug rehabilitations, right? There was five members of the town board that approved taking away the thousand-foot setback rule last year, right? This opened us up to many more cannabis dispensaries across the East End or in Riverhead, which includes Jamesport, Akleborg, right, Banning Hollow, Wedding River, Riverhead, right? The five people on the board, they're not the majority, the majority don't want this, right? We don't need drugs in our community, right? Some of the people that even, that are on the board, the five members of the board, don't even live in the immediate area, right? Some of them were even on the police, and they were part of the police athletically, right? For over twenty years. The revenue that, that a cannabis would bring in is about three percent on each sale, right? So if the one on, you know, Old Country Road makes a hundred million dollars, that's three million dollars a year, say. That's a lot of money, right? And the town supervisor even said that's a huge source of income, and yes, it is, you know? But, you know, something, the cartel's saying that, the same thing about Fentanyl, right? What happened to the war on drugs and just say no, right? The board's not looking at the message to our youth, the Norfolk tourism, the traffic, security and crime, property values, winery brewery competition, increased usage, impaired driving, the stigma, that there were eighty thousand deaths related to drugs in twenty twenty-four. This isn't the message we want to send, this isn't the will of the majority. We want to send positive messages to our kids, we need to promote a healthy lifestyle out here, right? Take the kids go fishing, right, for ice cream. You don't need a dispensary on every corner in Riverhead or anywhere else, right? And the only ones that approved this were Riverhead, Brookhaven, I think Southampton, and Babylon. And Babylon's doing really well with their revenue, they can have it. They can have it all. That's not what it's all about. What it's all about is our kids and promoting a healthy lifestyle. You know, and if you don't plan on sending your own kids and grandkids to go pick you up some marijuana, then don't, don't put it on other kids and families, thank you.
Thank you. I was recently in Maine, and there's a cannabis store on every corner, which shocked me. So I came back here to ask staff, due to our zoning, how many could we possibly have in Riverhead? What would the maximum number be? And the maximum number would be seven. Some of us probably feel that's still too many, but it's not like we will have one on every corner like Maine has, I was very surprised. But with that said, next speaker, please.
I want to ask any of you guys.
We need your name, ma'am.
My name is Marie Duell, okay? I grew up through the sixties, I was a semi-hippie. Now, has any of you ever gone and purchased some of this stuff? And seen the effect of it? Because it's strong stuff, and I know somebody who takes it as a, as they call it, medical marijuana. And I said, this stuff is stronger than back when I was buying it illegally, you know? So that's something to think about, because people will get, they'll roll a joint, or get a pipe, and hop in their car, and that's it, they're smoking it like a cigarette, just driving down the. They're smoking it like a cigarette, just driving down the road. Now, go in there and go up to that one and buy, buy some, and roll yourself a joint. And you're gonna see, you're not gonna get out of your recliner, because it's gonna blow you away.
Next speaker, please. Everybody good? Yes, sir?
May I comment? I represent the applicant.
Sure.
Sure.
Thank you.
Just give us your name, sir.
Vincent J. Tramarko. My office is at 1040 West Jericho Turnpike, Smithtown, New York. I'm the attorney, represent the applicant. And I've been doing this for many years, certainly not with cannabis, but, and, and I understand the people's concern. But I do think that Riverhead Town, the Town Council, already set the policy. It's not something that this board respectfully has the discretion, if you will, to say, no, we don't think it's a good idea. Maybe it isn't a good idea, but the town already said, by legislative act, that cannabis can be sold in certain dispensaries. One of the things is that, and I, I don't know if the folks that spoke know it, but Riverhead's requirements far exceed the state requirements. It's, it's certainly more restrictive than the state of New York requires. So I think we're trying to do the best we can. The location seems to be one, it doesn't seem to be. Actually, it meets every requirement. We didn't need variances, as the board knows. We came in here the last time and, and spoke about the construction, so I won't bore you with that. So again, I know the people's concern, but I think Riverhead, when they made that ordinance and made it more restrictive than even the state, they were thinking about protecting the public also. There, there are two other applications that I know Riverhead. One went to the Board of Appeals. The Board of Appeals denied it. It's in litigation. Another one is pending before the Board of Appeals. So it's not an easy task to get approved in the town of Riverhead. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Ma'am, if you want to speak, you're welcome to, but you have to come up to the mic.
Comment on the resolution.
Yeah.
I'm just curious as to, my name's Joan Whitney. I live in Stonely Woods off of Middle Road, which is directly behind where you're gonna put the dispensary, okay? And I just have to ask, why are you putting so many on 58? Why isn't one in Banning Hollow, Calverton?
There is one in Calverton.
Why are they all on 58? Why do we need so many dispensaries on one road?
I don't know the answer to that. That was not this board.
That's not this board.
We're the planning board. We take care of the site plan.
But you speak to the other people who are on boards.
We're separate and distinct boards. They don't tell us what to do. We don't tell them what to do. We're separate and distinct.
I, I can understand that, but you talk to each other. And you do talk to each other. So it really is a cause of concern. And you have a lot of 55-and-over people living in four communities. And everybody needs to think about what that is, impact is gonna be on the elderly people living in these communities. And it doesn't seem like anybody's thinking about that. That corner is very congested to begin with. And it's close to so many people who have homes and families. It's not just the elderly people. It, it just seems there's been overall, an overall approval of things that are not good for the community. There's no reason to have so many approved plans for a two-and-a-half-mile stretch. It's ridiculous. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Okay, with that said, we have 12 resolutions. Let's run through them, gentlemen.
All right, I'll move Resolution 2025-059, Zuma's Open Space Memo to the Town Board. So moved.
Second.
Moved in second, Mr. Zunicki.
Yes.
Mr. Hogan.
Yes.
Mr. Nenaro.
Aye.
Mr. Baer.
Yes.
And I vote aye. The motion carries.
I'll move Resolution Number 2025-060, granting extension of approval for the minor subdivision of 230 West Main Street.
Second.
Moved in second, Mr. Zunicki.
Yes.
Mr. Hogan.
Yes.
Mr. Nenaro.
Aye.
Mr. Baer.
Yes.
And I vote aye. The motion carries.
I'll move Resolution Number 2025-61, Akira House of Worship, FKA Cox Place of Worship. Resolution granting final site plan approval for the site plan application, seeking to convert an existing single-family dwelling into a place of worship and add 3,600 plot churchyard.
Second. Second.
Moved in second, Mr. Zunicki.
Yes.
Mr. Hogan.
Yes.
Mr. Nenaro.
Aye.
Mr. Baer.
Yes.
And I vote aye. The motion carries.
Resolution 2025-062, Home Depot Outdoor Storage and Site Improvement. Resolution granting administrative site plan approval to a site plan application seeking, seeking to legitimize and formally designate outdoor storage areas.
Second.
Moved in second, Mr. Zunicki.
Yes.
Mr. Hogan.
Yes.
Mr. Nenaro.
Aye.
Mr. Baer.
Yes.
And I vote aye. The motion carries.
I'll move Resolution 63, 2025-63, Faguda LLC, granting the preliminary, prelim, excuse me, preliminary approval for the site plan. So moved.
Second.
Moved in second, Mr. Zunicki.
Yes.
Mr. Hogan.
Yes.
Mr. Nenaro.
Aye.
Mr. Baer.
Yes.
And I vote aye.
I'll move Resolution 2025-064, grants preliminary approval for the site plan of 840 Old Country Road.
Second.
Oh, you seconded? I'm sorry. I was waiting for that. Moved in second, Mr. Zunicki.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to say that the people who came here had, had great, you know, answers and everything else. But this board, we do not make policy. We do site plan approval. Whether we agree with the cannabis law or not, that is not in our, not our situation to say yes or no. The site plan is in, you know, full compliance, does not need any variances. And, but we do appreciate the public for their comments. And I vote yes.
Mr. Hogan.
Yes.
Mr. Nenaro.
Aye.
Mr. Baer.
Yes.
I would just like to say something before I vote. I am not against these stores, but in my opinion, we would've been better off if they were in towns west of Riverhead. I spoke to Mr. Hogan earlier, and he had a, what I thought was a good idea. These should've been zoned in industrial areas, not necessarily commercial near residential. That being said, the property owner does have rights, and he met the criteria of the law. So I will vote yes. Motion carries.
Okay, that was Resolution Number 63, correct?
Yep, 64.
64, okay.
Number seven.
I'll move Resolution Number 2025-65, East End Commons BJ Fueling Station and Expansion. Resolution to schedule a public hearing for the site plan application, seeking to construct a 10,530-square-foot expansion.
Second.
Moved in second, Mr. Zunicki.
Yes.
Mr. Hogan.
Yes.
Mr. Nenaro.
Aye.
Mr. Baer.
Yes.
And I vote aye. The motion carries.
Resolution 2025-066, Bargain Molding. Result granting approval for an amended site plan for access and parking improvements to facility and conversion of an existing commercial building.
Second.
Moved in second, Mr. Zunicki.
Yes.
Mr. Hogan.
Yes.
Mr. Nenaro.
Aye.
Mr. Baer.
Yes.
And I vote aye. The motion carries.
I'll move Resolution 2025-67, Tanger Outlet Mall, 1,700 building for the Shake Shack conversion, granting preliminary site approval.
Second.
Moved in second, Mr. Zunicki.
Yes.
Mr. Hogan.
Yes.
Mr. Nenaro.
Aye.
Mr. Baer.
Yes.
And I vote aye. The motion carries.
I'll move Resolution Number 2025-68, Assume Lead Agency and Issue Negative Deck for Venetia Square.
Second.
Moved in second, Mr. Zunicki.
Yes.
Mr. Hogan.
Yes.
Mr. Nenaro.
Aye.
Mr. Baer.
Yes.
And I vote aye. The motion carries.
I'll move Resolution 2025-69, to schedule a public hearing for the site plan application of Venetia Square. So moved.
Second.
Moved in second, Mr. Zunicki.
Yes.
Mr. Hogan.
Uh, no, I disagree with the, the traffic pattern, leaving the shopping center and going north up Dogwood Drive.
Okay. Mr. Nenaro.
Aye.
Mr. Baer.
Yes.
And I vote yes. The motion carries four to one.
I'll move Resolution Number 2025-070, 940, 946 West Main Street Development. Resolution to schedule a public hearing for a site plan application, seeking to redevelop the existing commercial site. So moved.
Second.
Moved in second, Mr. Zunicki.
Yes.
Mr. Hogan.
Yes.
Mr. Nenaro.
Aye.
Mr. Baer.
Yes.
And I vote aye. The motion carries.
Minutes?
Public comment, I don't think we have any.
Nope.
Let's do the minutes, boys.
I'll move, I'll move the minutes of May 15.
Second.
Moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
I'll move the minutes to June 5th, so moved.
Second.
Moved in second, all in favor?